Okay. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Library Commission Meeting. Today is September 4th, 2025. And I'm just going to make a note that Commissioner Kimzie is not going to participate from Oregon tonight. This meeting will be held in person and will be streamed at www.youtube.com/user/thecityofpleasantin. It is requested that members of the public wishing to address the commission submit a speaker card. When public comment is opened on an agenda item, individuals may speak once per agenda item. Okay. So can we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we do the roll call, please? Commissioners Chen?
Present.
Emerson?
Present.
Joshi?
Present.
Kimzie?
Stroud?
Present.
Woodwell?
Present.
And Chair Sabatini?
Present.
Thank you. Are there any agenda amendments from staff?
There are no agenda amendments from staff.
Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from August 7th. Are there any proposed changes? Would someone give me a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Do we, we vote for this then, right? Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Emerson?
Aye.
Joshi?
Aye.
Stroud?
Aye.
Woodwell?
Aye.
Chair Sabatini?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay. Item number two, public comment regarding items not listed on the agenda. Are there any speaker cards? No, there are not. Great. Okay. Item number three. Recommend city council adopt a resolution approving a revised collection development policy. Am I reading the right thing? Yeah. To comply with state requirements.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for reviewing this item. This particular item reflects very minimal changes to the library collection development policy, and these are recommended to comply with what's called California Freedom to Read Act 1825, which goes into effect in January. And this is in preparation for that. The library will be, in effect, presenting this to council as well if approved by commission. And with that, the changes would be to support basically the freedom to read as well as to provide provisions, you know, against book banning in public libraries. So what the library did, staff looked at all of the recommended language and reviewed it, aligned with our existing policy, and felt that it was really in the spirit of our policy to use the same wording. So I think tonight, if you look at the draft, only the area that's highlighted in red, and that would be found on page 12 of your commission packet, indicates that these are the acknowledgements of the California Read Act, which is the following statements. The library's collection meets the broad and diverse interests of the community and respects both the library's autonomy and the specific needs of the city. The library serves as a center for voluntary inquiry and the dissemination of information and ideas. The library's materials should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people and should present diverse points of view in the collection as a whole. And members of the public have the right to receive access to a range of social, political, aesthetic, moral, and other ideas and experiences. And this is interpreted in, from the American Library Association's ALA Bill of Rights. So with that, I think, you know, tonight I did want to open up the discussion because it is a change to a library policy. However, it's not one that we thought was worth kind of reopening the whole policy because it was approved very recently in 2023. We feel that it does really meet the needs of the library, of the community. It has really served us well in sort of sharing with the community the premise for how materials are selected and deselected. And it does provide what the law also asks for, which is a way for the community to provide feedback on materials where there are matters of concern. So included in the packet, you'll see. Sorry, do I sound really loud? Am I a little too close to the microphone? Yeah. I was, I was feeling that I was echoing through the chamber. So if you go to, this would be page 14 of your packet. For our newer Commissioners, I don't know, you may not be as familiar with this form, but it accompanies our policy and it provides a really great tool for community members to provide information and a request for reconsideration of a material. The library doesn't get too many of these, but it has, over the years, we've handed out the form more than it's been turned in, I would say. I think because, you know, we want folks to give, you know, thoughtful consideration, but also have a channel to communicate with the library. So in the form, it does ask for information from the individual, although they can, they can choose how much information they share on the form. It does ask, you know, the name of the material. It asks if they have read or, you know, reviewed the entire material, how it came to their attention, what their concerns are as well, which is important. And then the action that they would like the library to consider. And then the library commits to a response within 30 days of receipt. So I think that's an important tool to consider alongside the policy recommendation. And I think, you know, you've seen the report, but if you have any questions, comments, I don't know that we have, since we don't have public comment, I think we can have, you know, questions and comments at the same time.
Commissioner Woodwell, do you want to start?
Just one question. I know that you said that you give out that form out more than you receive it. How many, how many times do you receive it, maybe a year?
We actually don't have a record on, on file that I could find of the receipt of any forms to date.
Maybe. There, there may not be a collection of that data, but do you yourself know of?
Yeah, that's a great question. There is some historical knowledge, and that's why I hesitate to say that we've never received, you know, a request of this sort. I think there, my understanding is there wasn't always a formal process for it. So any collection of this type of request could have been in a different format. But, you know, I couldn't find any, you know, information to that effect. So I do reserve the right to say that there may have been something turned in that I don't have access to.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chen?
Okay. Where do people find the form?
That is a great question. So it actually is on our policy page. So we do have, I believe, two separate links to the policy itself for collection development as well as the Request for Reconsideration form.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that input, or that info.
Is there a process for the form? When it, so say one arrives next week. Is there a process that, that happens with the form? Is it like, is it routed to certain people, copied, et cetera? I mean, if we don't have a record of it, it implies there isn't a process.
I think there have different, been different staff members that have worked with these requests most likely over the years. And the current process is it would go to the selectors area. So the individual who orders, and each different library staff orders and maintains a different part of the collection. So with our librarians, we have six librarians who oversee different parts of the collection as well as our senior librarians as well. And each one is responsible for a different area of, let's say, adult fiction or nonfiction. There's also young adult materials, you know, audio visuals. So whoever the selector of that particular area, let's say it was a young adult material, then the, the form would go to them specifically, and they would draft a response, and they would work with library administration to discuss as well.
Yeah, I feel like there should be something formal for that because this is the kind of thing across the country that's been very, it ignites people's.
Absolutely.
So if it does come in, it seems like there should be some formal process to make sure that. I mean, I understand what you're saying about how if it's young adult, it should go to the person who manages.
Yeah, that's our process.
It's just that, I think it needs to be a little bit further than that because you wouldn't want something like this to fall through a crack somewhere and, and not be, and not be addressed. You know, not intentionally, but, you know, just accidentally.
Yeah, that, that is very important.
It, it just seems like there, there needs to be some kind of capture of it because it is the kind of, you know, hot button thing.
And so I'm also sort of gathering, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that you mean in terms of a way to memorialize or archive or save a record? Because there would be a response, and it would be likely signed by the, you know, either, I would say probably the director or the assistant director, and then we would save a copy of that. I think what's hard is I haven't seen one in my eight years here. And so it's, it's hard to speak to that, but we, we do retain records. And, you know, looking at other libraries, this form is very much similar to a lot of other agencies. And the, so I guess my question is, is it more about the form or just around the, kind of the response and how that's collected?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that it would, there would be a response. And I'm sure that something like that, because it's so rare, would get attention. It's just that to not have there be a formal process for it, it just seems like that means the very first time it's, it's a fire drill. So nobody really knows what to do with it, you know? So it just seems like it might be worth.
Yeah, we can definitely follow up. And yeah, I appreciate the input.
I mean, it just seems like if you plan in advance, then it's not the fire drill the very first time it happens. Because it hasn't happened in a lot of years, there isn't anybody who knows.
I think we do know, we just, you know, I think we wouldn't, we would have to determine, and I'm sorry if I made it sound a little disorganized, but I think we, we do have a clear cut. You know, we have information on who orders in what area. We, you know, we would work with them on the response, and then we would provide a response, you know, from administration. But I think to your point, it's like maybe a little bit of sort of a practice run or walking through what that looks like to help us prepare.
Yeah, because presumably the people who manage the collections haven't seen one of these in eight years either. So, you know, they wouldn't necessarily know what would be the next step for them to do. I mean, they might be inclined to respond to it, of course, but they might need to know that they need to take it farther up or.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I think that's just what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I jump back in? Pile on, but, and maybe it doesn't have to be done for this iteration, but it seems like this, this policy should, should state that, like, or, or maybe it isn't a policy, maybe it's.
Like procedural.
Procedural, but yeah, like somewhere there should be something that says, you know, we're going to give it to the, the person who gets it, and they're going to convene. I don't know how many people, you know, you or Heidi, or both, or you and someone else to review it. And, and ultimately, there should be a binder or a place where the complaint and the response land.
Are filed, yes. Yes. And I think, you know, what you're both, you know, saying is you're really looking into this for our staff teams too. You know, because, you know, as you've mentioned throughout the country, this is a concern. So I do appreciate that. And yeah, I think you've brought some important points about how internal procedures, we can look at, you know, how, to your point of where they're saved, how they're, how they're managed, kind of walking through that, maybe even a training. I think those are all good points. You know, the more prepared everyone feels, the more equipped, I think, the, you know, these are very difficult situations.
And they don't come up very often.
And they don't come up very often.
You may not see another one for another eight years, but you never know.
So thank you. I appreciate that.
And maybe this was suggested, but I would like to explicitly state it because when I first saw the form, I thought, oh, well, I wonder what the process is. And you can see the process. I found one for like Santa Clara and Roseville of those specifics, like we convene this person, or even the process that you have, right? Just like memorializing that in, in this policy, I think, would be really helpful as someone who is curious how those processes go. And also, what I think is really interesting is Santa Clara says specifically that you can't request the same item for five years. So like if you, and I think that might be helpful too, to like be able to state that. Yeah.
Well, thank you for that. All of those would be changes to the policy if they were to be policy changes. You know, I think really the question for commission is, would it be, would it feel comfortable to have those be like procedural changes? Or do you think it needs to be communicated upfront? I think that is really the question because then, you know, you can provide an ultimate recommendation on this. You know, where, I don't know if it's something where you'd be comfortable providing a recommendation to add wording, you know, for the community that they're seeing upfront, like you mentioned with other libraries, that this is the process, you know? And then this is, you know, for instance, if there was something about, you know, one request every five years that that was stated. I have seen that. I've seen different numbers for different agencies, and then some do not have them at all. With that, you know, I would just hesitate to, you know, if you would be comfortable with staff adding that wording in, and I do see that being a valid point to, you know, share with the community what the process is, then could we put that language in and take that to council for approval to meet the timeline for the state requirements? So that's, you know, really a question, you know? If you vote to recommend, with recommendations, you know, to adjust the policy, that's another option. So I hope that was, that was a little convoluted. But, you know, really the question is, do you want to add that language in to the policy document?
Or is it procedure?
Or is it procedural?
And when you say it's procedural, does the library have procedures that they train people on?
We do. And, and many times, those are not in policy documents. They may be, they could be communicated on our website. They can be communicated, communicated in a handout we provide, for instance.
Because I could kind of imagine someone who's, like you said, people get upset enough that they ask for the form, but maybe go, oh, I'm being ridiculous. But if somebody's mad enough to fill it out because they don't like what's in the library, they're going to hand this form in and go, what are you going to do with it now? Tell me what's going to happen, you know? So it'd be good if it was.
And would it be better on the form, which is part of the policy packet? Or is it better on the policy?
I don't think it necessarily needs to be on the form, but I do think it would be helpful to be on the website when you're accessing the form.
And that makes sense as well.
I think it could be procedural in that sense. I think it could be part of, like a procedural piece. It could be on the form. It should be told to the staff people who would.
Are presenting the information.
Yeah, so that it's maybe part of the handbook, procedural handbook or something, in case this happens to you. This is what you do.
With FAQs on our website as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you. That's really, really good feedback.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree. I like to see that the whole commission's on board on this. I think that we should definitely go for a more procedural approach if we can do it in two ways. Number one, which is having staff, when they provide the forms, kind of walk them through what that process will look like in the future and having them ready to handle those situations. I like the point that you brought up, like dealing with it like a fire drill, per se. I think that could be useful. And then number two, which is having that in the website and doing, doing it that way. And I think overall, in terms of the policy, the collection development policy, I really like the manner in which we're actually already meeting with this state policy and state requirement. So that's great to see.
Well, thank you. That's, that's good insight. Thank you.
So it seems we're all comfortable. Is it true that we're all comfortable with it being a procedure? And we can recommend, do we feel like we want to recommend approval to the city council? Of what we see before us?
So what we would be approving right now as a, as a commission would be the collection development policy with these changes in red.
That's correct.
And we would, at the same time, be recommending that there be a procedure developed and established. We want that in two kind of separate zones.
You know, procedures are not under the purview of commission, but policy is. So you could recommend adding, you know, recommend with, you know, additional wording to include, you know, in a policy or in the form, which also goes in the packet to council. Many commissions will just, you know, request from staff or advise, and we can make those changes. So it's really a commission question.
Yeah, I mean, my sense of it, and I don't know about how everybody feels, but this commission seems to feel that the procedure is pretty important. So I understand what you're saying, that procedure is technically not within the purview of the commission. But if we're approving.
It wouldn't be something you could vote on, I guess, is what I'm sharing.
Right. But, but because of the way the minutes are taken now, this stuff kind of is not documented in the minutes. So, and there's no real way to do that. I understand that. So, so if we were to make a recommendation that some of this information be put on the form, which is part of the policy, then in essence, we would be stating that as part of our.
For the record. Yes, you could do that if.
As, as part of our approval.
If the commission would like it added to the form, you could make a motion.
I, I don't want it to fall into a black hole and just be forgotten, which it feels like it will if we don't put it on the motion that it's in this policy or it's on this form.
If we modify the policy to state that what happens to the form will follow the procedure in the library, whatever library procedure there is associated with it, then we have in essence said that there needs to be some sort of.
I think it's much neater if it goes on the form. I think if you feel, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to include in the form. It sounds like other libraries have that information readily available in their policy.
This is what will happen, this is what will happen to this form. After you fill this out, this is what will happen to the form.
Yes, I think it may be, you know.
That'd be all right.
Most policies, and you, you try and write them within a longevity or lifespan in them, so you're not listing specific positions. We don't know if we'll always have the same titles, so it wouldn't be titles. It would be something general like library administration and, you know, collection development, you know, staff, or something very generalized because, again, you don't want to be going back every two years on something, you know, that may have a five-year lifespan. Because, and we have seen that in policies and procedures, we prefer not to. Keep going back to council on things. It's confusing as well to the community.
So are we going to hammer out the wording we want on the form? Or are we going to?
Do we have to? Do, do we?
Can we agree that it's going to have collection development, staff, and administration? Library administration, is that what? And, and that, well, it already says that they'll review it and respond in 30 days.
I think the process is in there, but if you'd like it more explicitly stated that there will be a written response, I think that's not specifically outlined. If, let me look one more time.
It's got to be maintained somewhere. I just feel like, because when someone, what if someone comes in and goes, I filled out this complaint six months ago and nothing happened? And we need to be able to know, like, no, we've got these procedures.
Yes, so we would retain, retain those records. Just so you know, the library, like all city departments, have a, has a record retention policy, and it's generally, the maximum is seven years. Many things are two years under the law. So yes, we would retain it, but I think because I've been there eight years, that's why I wouldn't have a record of a prior one. I can just lean on sort of the historical knowledge of staff. But can we just review the wording one more time on what the form indicates and what the policy indicates for next steps unless someone has it handy and would like to read it?
It is on page 13.
Oh, thank you.
Patrons may share their concerns regarding the content of a particular title by filling out and submitting a Request for Reconsideration of Materials form. Library staff will review the form and provide a written response within 30 days of receipt.
Well, okay. I guess it is there.
I will say too, I think when I first read this, I wasn't coming from it of a, oh, this is, I mean, rightfully should have, as Commissioner Emerson was, this is a very hot topic, and there are books being banned left and right. And I was coming from it from someone like, well, if someone wants to ban a book, and I firmly don't believe in banning of any kind of books, what is the actual process that happens? That doesn't ensure that, per se, but is like a very, I don't know, is a strong process that would make sure that if something is banned, it's banned for the right reasons. And readily, I found on, in Santa Clara and Roseville, and I think Oakland, is that it's three people. They review it. Some of them even have a youth on it, on the committee to review it, and then they provide a written response within 30, 60 days. It's very similar, but the fact that it's library staff will review the form, it's just, it's very minimal in comparison to what the other ones are. And I'm, I'm fine if we want to, if that's enough. And I don't necessarily think I need, think it needs to be in the policy. But when I went to the website, I was curious, okay, so what happens with the form? Surely there will be something more about that on the website, and there wasn't anything. So I don't even necessarily need it to be in the policy. I just think it would be helpful as, yeah, to know that if I saw someone submitting a form or whatever.
Do you mind, Chair, you mentioned Santa Clara County, and there was another agency that provided, I think you said Roseville?
Yeah.
What was the, do you remember what that?
So Santa Clara and Roseville's were actually a little bit more detailed. They had, Roseville's the one that had the youth, I think, yeah, includes three people. One of them is a youth to review the process. They require the person, the resident, to actually have read or consumed the material before. I know it's a question on the form, but they actually require them to. And then they take 60 days. And they also were one that will not, you can't submit the same, no one can submit the same book or material within five years. And then Santa Clara was pretty similar to that as well, has a committee as well.
Another option is, I mean, I think these are really good, valid considerations is, in the interest of time, we could, you know, discuss, you know, I can answer questions to this of how this would look is if this is a policy that commission would like to explore more in depth as part of the policy goals, this could come back with, you know, I'd like to engage, you know, the broader staff in this before making that determination. I just don't know, in the interest of time, this could be approved and then come back again to commission. You know, if, this is an important issue right now in our society. I think that it may merit more examination, but, you know, in our agency, who would be the youth? You know, which three staff? And I think that, you know, I don't feel comfortable making that decision tonight. I think the only item at hand that we're on a timeline for is to submit to the state. And if, you know, maybe if we could bring the conversation back to some of those changes that are recommended by the state and, you know, that's, if the commission would consider approving and then, you know, recommending for a future meeting to kind of open up that discussion, and that would give us more time to bring back, you know, staff recommendations on that as well. Because I, I think these are all good considerations that just weren't explored in the interest of this policy.
I guess the only piece of the policy that then that, you know, might apply in this case is maybe, since we've said it will be reviewed and a response will be given, and I think that those are, are really the critical pieces, that maybe it could be stated that there is a limit to how many times it can be submitted. And so that it implies that a record would be kept. Or you could say a record will be kept because there's a limited number of times it can be. And then maybe to solve the other issue that we seem to be talking about is maybe we need at a later point to create an agenda item that says, we'll review whatever procedure you come up with. I mean, I realize that it's not.
It would be a policy, not a procedure. I couldn't bring that first off, or I couldn't bring that for commission approval.
Not for approval, but for review?
We could bring, similar to the program plan, we could bring back like a collection development plan that had more details in it.
Yeah, if you created, I mean, obviously, we're not trying to create that, but we need to be informed about it. So maybe it could be an agenda item.
To review and discuss.
Where you let us know, this is the procedure that we figured out, staff figured out, just to let us know so that we know, and this is where we're going to post it. And, you know, I mean.
Certainly.
That seems like something you could have just let us know, not that we have to vote on it.
Certainly, I, yes. And really, I do want to open it up for commission. I think I still wouldn't feel comfortable committing to like a. I still wouldn't feel comfortable committing to like a limit of a five, you know, five requests submitted without going back to staff. I think they did consider that when they drafted the policy and decided not to go that route, so I'd like to hear why. And I'm sorry, I don't have that information handy. I think I'm very comfortable bringing this back, you know, for a more holistic approach or bringing sort of information on collection development back. There's some, um, not to go too far off topic, but I know that um, it's been very helpful to have commission weigh in on our collection development plan, things that came up recently too with the library, um, you know, the, the refund for lost materials also um, really highlighted that we wanted to kind of look at our process for running reports to replace materials and kind of updating our collection development plan with that information. So I think there's actually some good elements we'd like, wouldn't mind bringing back, um, and that could be one of them. Or you could also agendize bringing the policy back as well.
And when is this due with the state?
Well, it would go to council and then it would be the final version approved by council along with the approved resolution, um, in, by the end of the year. With also some timeline built in for the state to review and respond.
So it seems like, my impression is that possibly we want to just approve this iteration to, and recommend it for city council and at the same time add it to our future agenda items for ma- material review. Detail.
Yeah, maybe that, right, maybe that recommendation is to bring back the policy for discussion and at that same time review what the procedure is so that we decide whether or not the policy has to be-
As part of the report, we could definitely indicate the procedures.
Right. And if we decide that the procedure that you have is sufficient and we don't need to touch the policy, then maybe we just, we just decide at that meeting that we don't need to touch the policy anymore. And that's how the whole thing gets reviewed. That, that probably is the way to do it. My thought.
I agree.
So at this point, we need-
This is a, yes, this is a vote.
Okay. Do we need motions for this?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the collection development policy with the changes in red. For it to be submitted to the city council.
I second.
Thank you. And we'll call, or vote? Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Emerson?
Aye.
Joshie?
Aye.
Stroud?
Aye.
Uh, Woodwell?
Aye.
And Chair Sabatini?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Great. Okay. So item four, uh, is to review and discuss the revised Pleasant and Public Library Program Plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you very much. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
So this is the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six library pro- program plan, the second iteration. Um, so thank you very much for reviewing this, um, item again. This is a program plan that was brought forward in February twenty-twenty-five. That was prior to the approval of the biennial city, um, budget. And this is being brought back with adjustments to some of the program areas. Um, and this is to really provide information for commissioners on what programs are being, um, brought back to the library that have restarted in September, as well as, um, different programs that have been either scaled back or, um, paused. Um, this particular presentation is really, um, to, you know, provide commissioners with information for their outreach to the community. One of the, um, common questions I was hearing with, you know, there is a, you know, still a sizable amount of programs being offered, but what is not coming back, I think was the question. So hopefully the agenda packet that you had this evening provided that information. So I'll just kind of walk through the presentation and then if you want to jot down questions for the end, it's obviously not a voting item, but it is something where we would love commissioners to review and discuss and provide input as well for staff and also to help inform our outreach as, and then, you know, get the message out to the community about the programs that we are offering. Um, so just, we always like to frame any program plan presentation with our libraries and recreation strategic plan. And that is our newest strategic plan for the next five years, our roadmap from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty. And this is one of the largest goals that this program plan meets is building a community where everyone belongs, livability and enrichment. And for this one here, and I'm sorry, I can't see very far, but it's to provide programs and services and that promote a livable and vibrant community. So over time, and this is since we started our first program plan, we really wanted to emphasize in the library that the role of programming is that programs should be intentionally designed and incorporate the needs and interests of our diverse community. That's very important to our library team and to our library patrons, that we keep that in mind. And that programs should always in some way connect back to our library services and that would be promoting our collections and materials and our, and our other services that we provide. So planning library programs was, this was a, a more difficult year for staff. And I think that they've really done an excellent job of balancing the programs that we are continuing to meet the needs as um, of as wide a group of individuals of different age levels, um, as we could. And that's, you know, there were a lot of considerations with the library's new hours going from sixty-two hours a week to forty-eight, um, with reduced staffing levels. And what that yielded to with library open hours was reduced facility availability. So that was another, um, area that staff went to, um, you know, went to the table to plan around. So they did develop, I think, a really good scaled approach to balance resources. Uh, one area that was reduced was the standalone events for individual program areas like adult, um, adult programs that were not sort of recurring series, same for children's programs. Um, most of the bigger scale events did, did stay in the program plan. Um, so those would be the cultural celebrations, the summer reading program, of course. And then, um, you know, just, I, you know, I enjoyed putting this picture in here because this is one of the continuing programs, Pause to Read. This was the Halloween edition, so I just really enjoyed this picture and the engagement of the young person reading. There were so many great pictures of the dogs. Some of them looked asleep, but I knew they were just probably relaxed by the therapeutic power of reading. And then in the second picture, there's a, a really neat program that I don't know that our new commissioners that we've had a chance to share about. Um, but our adult ESL and literacy program does provide, um, a really unique program with Stone Ridge Creek. It's a partnership. So Stone Ridge Creek Retirement Community has residents that have stepped up as literacy tutors and they will actually provide tutoring sessions with, um, the staff that work at Stone Ridge Creek. So it's been a really powerful program. Um, it relaunched just in May twenty-twenty-four. And so this is this, you know, in this year, twenty-twenty-five, they just got ten new tutors from the residents. And they just build the most meaningful relationships and friendships. And I just think, you know, this was a, a really neat picture of a learner tutor session going on, but there's so many more and the tutors have been fantastic. The, the staff there are just wonderful and I think it's a chance of service, um, to each group. So, you know, to really serve each other. So that, um, those are two programs that are continuing. So in the planning for programs, obviously one of the most important steps is to identify community needs and interests. And we, you know, staff uses a number of tools for that. I think we've run through these, you know, several times before when we present the program plan, but program surveys, um, performance measures, which are program attendance and, um, in some cases, the use of materials that are promoted at the programs. Um, and other measures, how many programs are, are offered as well. Um, various qualitative methods, and those are the things that fall outs, outside of the statistics area. So um, things like, you know, hearing from community members who, um, attend programs and provide feedback. Um, sometimes we'll get what are called Zendesk tickets. Zendesk is a CRM. It's a customer engagement tool um, that we use really to email staff and we do get feedback on programs. We get requests for programs from that. And then we also get in-person, you know, requests and interest set serviced us. And then staff does continually monitor public library trends, um, not just in other neighboring libraries, but also throughout the country through professional journals such as, um, Library Journal, American Libraries, um, Booklist, um, some of the traditional library professional journals, but also things like blogs that are followed by staff and listserv. So just need to have a lot of tools, um, you know, to follow and kind of learn about what is out there. And then, um, we also mentioned Polaris. Polaris is our library catalog. So we are able to pull like usage statistics for materials from that. So just a lot of neat, um, different tools that we can use. And then we do use Survey Monkey surveys as well. Um, so these are results, um, and I apologize, these are actually not from fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. They're from twenty-four, twenty-five. I obviously had a little issue with the fiscal years here, um, but this was over the last year. And I'm just going to try and, is there a way to make the screen a little bigger so I can actually read the words on the screen lately? No, okay. I think, um, it's a little far for me to see that. Oh, actually this computer lets me do it. Oh, thank you. One moment, I'm just going to grab tech support. Thank you, Pierre. So, see how it's- My eyesight's not always the best. Oh, yes. Okay. Oh, yes. There's a neat tool that puts like a flashlight on the screen. Can you all see your screens pretty well? Okay. This one's just a little further, so. Okay, so types of programs was the first sort of survey response category that we looked at. And, um, one neat quote that we had from an individual was they were really, um, appreciated having programs that provide an opportunity to meet and connect with people, to share a love of books. So this is really, this is our brand and it's really exciting to hear that. Um, and we do try and weave that connection into any of our library programs. Uh, we did hear, um, actually in a couple, um, survey responses, interest in programs on sustainability. So we did have a really robust Earth Day program last year. We're going to look again and see what we're going to do for Earth Day this next year. So that is, um, definitely an interest in our community and from some of our youth as well. Um, for unique programming, um, one great response we had, um, we all actually collectively spoke as staff about this. Was one of our favorite survey responses was, um, talking about baby story time. So one thing I think we didn't realize at the time is we're one of only three apparently baby story times in the area. And in addition, we do some kind of unique things with the program. This particular participant drives all the way from Walnut Creek to attend ours. Um, you know, we're seeing ninety-plus people at each story time. But what they also appreciate is, um, for all the songs and the rhymes, we put the words on a big screen so the families can all follow along. And I think just that engagement's so important. And they also appreciated that we have a giant mat for the babies to kind of have a safe space and play on too. Um, so just some unique elements. Our staff has really done a great job of weaving into that unique program. And then program format, um, there, this was some really good information on just encouraging us to consider the right facility for the right program. So there was some feedback on, you know, perhaps the theater would work better for one type of program than another. If it's a more engaging program, better to have people at tables. So I thought it was just really good that we think about that. I don't think we always think about the venue as much because we think we're at the library. But there are different ways we can kind of set up spaces. So I thought that was really good to hear. And there was also some feedback on that some program, the same program was too long or too short. Um, so we do try and have varying amounts of length for the programs. I think that was in particularly a toddler story time. So I think one of the participants felt that it was too long of a, a program and maybe didn't retain interest. And then the other participant thought it went by too fast. So we try and go somewhere in the middle, but I think that just highlights that there's, you know, it is nice to have, you know, a variety of programs of differing lengths. Advertising, it's always, we always ask about advertising on our surveys, so it is good to hear. We always hear, you know, get more information to the schools, which we are definitely working on, but we are always exploring new channels. Um, the other thing they mentioned is maybe a flyer for the summer reading program, which we do send out, but we're thinking maybe, you know, are we getting it to the right place? Helpful feedback. And then also, um, having a web presence for specific programs. Zippy specifically was called out. So we are looking at a better home for Zippy's routes and visits. And then, um, oh, yes, I think I actually jumped around, um, format. Yeah, I mentioned the program facilities. So I think that was the highlight. We didn't get as much survey information this past fiscal year as we have in other years, so we're exploring why that is. And I think, you know, we may look at our surveys and look at the, you know, some of the, you know, standard questions we ask, but some of the ones that we ask for each program, are they the right number of questions? Are they, you know, really targeting the, the responses that are helpful for us in planning? So that's a little bit about surveys. And then, um, next, uh, you know, I did want to refer us, if everyone has their packet handy, to table three. I did not move this large table content into the slide because it was a little long. But I did want to kind of dive into a little bit, um, some of the programs that, you know, that we're offering, some things that are continued. Um, I did provide this, I think this is the first program plan report that we provided attendance for each program. So I thought that would be helpful. And that's over an annual period. It is important to note, some programs did not run the entire year for, you know, many reasons. So, you know, you have to kind of take that into consideration as well. So, um, on the list of library programs, you know, just kind of going through table three, um, you know, we went from age category zero to five in the first few for obviously story time sessions. And then we jumped into, you know, the elementary years and then teen years, adults and all ages. Um, so with baby, toddler, family and sensory, the anticipation is all of those are continuing. Sensory story time, I did want to share, um, if you've, if you have questions in the community or if you have just personally questions on that one, we are looking at bringing it back later in January. Um, that was a program that was offered Sunday mornings. And one of the premises behind sensory story time is it's offered at a very quiet period of time. And because it's meant to be sort of a low sensory environment and, you know, a calming, we would usually have the dim lights. We'd have it when the library was closed and allow the, um, children in the program who may be neurodivergent or have sensory issues to be able to, you know, experience the program in that setting. In a quieter setting, it's a small group session. And then to be able to use the library while, you know, it was closed. Um, so we'd like to recreate that, but it is challenging because we only have two mornings when we're fully staffed. And then obviously we're not open on Sundays, so we're looking at possibly Saturday morning, but we want to see the cadence, you know. It, we're now open at nine. How busy is it from nine to ten? Or are there other mornings? You know, there really is only the option right now of, because we're, um, we are open later on Tuesday and Wednesdays. So it's a Monday morning when we have viewer staff, um, or a Thursday or Friday or Saturday morning and Thursday, we have another story time happening. Friday, we have another story time happening. So you know, there's just reduced number of days. And so we'd like to see how busy. So we're taking, you know, door statistics and gathering the least busy, you know, if there isn't a time to offer it. So that's why the delay till January. Um, the other programs all start back this month. And then, um, book laker visits, um, jumping, oh, I'm sorry, let me pop back up to field trips. So field trips, we talked a lot about. We had the same challenge of when to offer a field trip when our mornings are taken by story times. Um, we, you know, we would still encourage schools to visit us, but we're not offering the staff-led story times for this academic year. Um, we'll look again at the following year if there is an opportunity. We've spoken with some of the schools and they do completely understand the situation. It did take, you know, it took a, a good amount of staff planning for those field trips. It was a really nice outreach opportunity. Uh, we're going to focus right now on book laker. We brought that back. Um, hopefully classroom visits launching in October. I think there's been a lot of communication with the book laker volunteers and a lot of excitement over that. So that was one that, um, that we are not offering this academic year. And then book laker visits, um, on weekdays, um, book laker visits, uh, this is a very modest estimate, serve about five thousand students a year. So it is a really large scale program. As many of these are. Um, pause to read is offered about eighteen times a year, usually in about four-week sessions and then with a break in between. And they are designed to be, you know, it's a limited number of, you know, students in each session. And that one is continuing with the, and is a volunteer-based program as well that's staff-led. And then children's special programs, um, these are over the summer. Um, so they, they used to happen more like monthly and this would be maybe a, a movie in the afternoon. This could be, I think we had an afternoon tea at one point, um, stems, uh, STEM Saturday. So those, we moved just to summers. And so they will, you know, we do anticipate, you know, it would be lower attendance if they were offered just over the summers, but that is really a staffing- a staffing consideration of why those went, you know, to just a summer model. And then teen special programs would just not be offered. Those would be the quarterly programs. And then teen zone, so that's the afternoon program right after school. So that one, we actually scaled back. It was offered three to five PM. It's gonna, is now three to four PM. It's that busiest after school hour. So they're still able to come in the meeting room. They actually do get a little homework done. Or they have some games out and they connect. We did find, you know, we looked at performance measures and usage and most students left by, you know, kind of the mid part of the four o'clock hour. So I think, you know, going for a three to four session, because we do have to have two adults in there, or two, I mean, two staff members, but they, you know, it's, it's really for, you know, everyone's safety. You know, it's just a little hard to staff that two hours a day, two staff a day, when we could be, you know, covering our public service desk. So that's where we landed with teen zone. And then teen advocates, we really want to bring back this volunteer program. It's very popular over the summer. It's where the teens, they actually create, you know, a video, and they, they do apply for the positions. So it's a great opportunity for them to be, you know, at a high school level, really promoting reading in the community. And they, you know, it's, we really get a lot of accolades for that program from the teens and from the community. I think you've seen videos presented here. And it also does provide, you know, they're, they're really are providing the reading program information to our community. So it's also just, you know, it's a win win for a high volume program of, you know, that where we see thousands of participants each summer. Literacy ESL obviously would be continuing, and that's a grant funded program with, with a staff commitment. You can see the programs themselves, over 2,000 participants. And just to clarify what that 2,201 number is, that's actually, doesn't even include the individual tutoring sessions. So that number would be much higher. We use this information to report to the state, and that information is reported differently. So this would be conversation classes, this would be book clubs, this, you know, so really, that's, that number is in fact, much higher. Literacy ESL tutor training, we did want to include this as well. This is offered bi-monthly. So we average, you know, a little over 100 participants who come on to take the Literacy tutor training. Not all continue on to be a tutor. I would say it's a good number that do. But that's, you know, that's also been a successful program. But we're always looking for more tutors, if you know people. So, and then adult special programs, about three times a year, those are not going to be offered in this coming year. Film Club for Adults and Book Club for Adults. So those, you know, this was difficult. Some of the adult programs were not as heavily attended. They were, you know, that's not to put a value statement on that. Those are just, you know, attendance numbers and they're, you know, there wasn't, you know, the staff to continue to offer those and to provide some of the other, you know, larger, you know, scale programs. Veterans mobile visits, these are very passive programs that are provided by the Palo Alto, you know, Veterans Administration. And they, they do, you know, the bulk of the work. They pretty much let us know when they're coming. They provide them the mobile outreach van. They, they table the event. It's very, very, very important to provide those services. And it's really, you know, it's very minimal involvement and stuff. But it is a great program to have at the library. Our puzzle and games program. So that was one that, it started out a little slower. It was, you know, sort of a variation of that memory cafe program. It was a way to continue that, which also didn't have super high participation. It was an adult program. But once we opened it up to families, it actually grew exponentially. And we continued it over the summer because that one in particular, it tied in with the game and puzzle theme for the summer of Level Up. So that was, you know, that was kind of neat to see that grow over the summer. Most of our summer programming is extremely popular. The cultural celebrations, Diwali will continue. The Dia de las Muertas event also continuing. Hispanic Heritage, we're actually kind of combining that with the Dia program. That one is also popular. It just, you know, we have it offsite. And I think we're trying to focus that one at being at the library. I think that's a favorite of the library staff and the, the library patrons. So I think that, you know, it's, it'd be too big with the dancers and the performers to have at the library. So we're gonna focus more on the activity that's so popular with the community of the afrendas and creating those. And, you know, just, we had a lot of really great feedback from the community on that event. And then the Native American Heritage Celebration, that one's still being determined. It will probably be at the Alviso Adobe. I did include it because the Friends of the Library do help sponsor that event, along with Lunar New Year, Black History Month, and Juneteenth, and AAPI. So once again, thank you to our Friends of the Library for their very generous support of that wonderful, wonderful series. Juneteenth, that was a great event. One thing that we felt though is that was, you know, we decided to go with Black History Month just because of the timing. And it was just a little easier to advertise to the schools. We had better school involvement when we had it in February than when we had in summer. And we really do like to get the students and the schools involved. And we were able to get, you know, we get different, you know, groups from the school to participate when we have it not over the summer. And then Zippy visits, to close with the letter Z, with that one, we'll continue those. Just in the first two visits, when we had in May and June for the library, that we had 380 individuals. So, you know, getting really good numbers. Those are designed to really just be there in, kind of in lieu of maybe like a story time. So we're, you know, we're not adding one more program when we have capacity issues. We are using it to get out in the community with our existing programs, if that makes sense. So I think with that, that was a very long-winded presentation. But there's a lot of detail. So let me just scroll to the next slide. And just in our last slide before our questions and discussions, I want to just highlight some of our more recent marketing and communications that we will be continuing. We are bringing back the bus wrap. We did survey, I know Literacy asks their new tutors, how did you hear about us? And they did mention the bus wrap and Spotify. So those are coming back. The bus wrap, for anyone who didn't see the bus around town, hopefully you do. It's on the back of the bus. I mean, it's on the back exterior of the bus. And then pause to read, I wanted to kind of highlight, we are trying to do this coming year, more of our flyers and advertising in Spanish, you know, bilingual flyers, particularly when we're reaching out to the schools. We think this is very important. Also highlighting things on our web carousel, social media blasts, Facebook event pages, and making sure that we're putting things on those community calendars, whether it's the patch. Again, PUSD communication's very important, and also the Pleasant and Weekly. And then the targeted ads, like I mentioned, that Literacy's doing. And if I'm missing anything, I think just, you know, using our, leveraging our webpage for the events calendar too, has been very helpful. We do get a lot of traction and signups for, on that page. And flyers and posters in the library and house marketing as well. So I think our goal is really to make our programs more visible and accessible to the community. And we would obviously, we always welcome input on that, if you have other ideas. So I think, just want to thank everyone. Thanks for the, you know, looking at this and providing insights. It's been, you know, it has been challenging to adjust our programs. I'm just really, I just really want to shout out our team for just putting things together so quickly in the month of August. A whole new schedule with whole new hours was not easy necessarily. And we do hope that it can meet, you know, the needs of our broader community. We understand it's not gonna meet, meet as many folks, but we're hoping to find ways that we can get the word out. And, you know, if you have insights along the way, we'll keep coming back. We'll bring our program calendar every month to Commission too. And if you, as always, if you'd like to do some outreach at any of these programs or events, just let me know. So I'll end with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Joshie, do you have any questions or comments?
Absolutely. So I did take a look at the attendance, looking at fiscal year 2023, 2024. And I'm really happy to see that across all age groups, we're seeing significant increases, which is a really great point. And one thing that I love the most is teenagers are nearly 10x from 439 to nearly 5,000 right there. And so regarding that, I had one question regarding the teen zone. I know that there are a lot of programs that we're trying to boost up. I just wanted some clarification in terms of the reason, rationale behind reducing it to 50% as it does seem to be one of the strongest programs, at least in terms of attendance.
Well, thank you. Yes. And I do agree that the attendance is strong. I think we all know we are right by Pleasant and Middle School. So in some ways, it's a tad unfair because we have a built in audience. I think that program, unlike any other on here, is almost daily, except, with the exception of literacy. I think literacy is almost daily. So that is one reason the numbers are so high. But additionally, the why of the 50% reduction was a staffing consideration and based on usage patterns. So one thing we found, so when the students come over, they do stay, most leave in the four to five hour. We don't get them to stay. In fact, last year, we sort of tried to bribe them to stay by offering snacks in the second hour. So that wasn't effective, by the way. So, but we want them to stay, not for the snacks. We want them to engage. And we did have that very wonderful partnership with the district. And we do understand that, you know, and acknowledge the district is going through its own financial challenges. So they did, part of the reduction of the program was they did have to pull their staff member that provided the after school homework support. So that was kind of a draw as well. Although I would say, you know, it probably didn't have the usage to substantiate a staff member. So with that, you know, just how do we really cover our desks at that busy hour? Because our public service desks are also busy in the three to six range. I would say maybe three to five especially, from our door counts. So, you know, we have two service desks. We have a children's desk and information desk. And then we also have, you know, now the after school program, where we do staff with two staff members in that. So just making sure we have enough coverage. It was gonna be harder with, you know, keeping open both hours. But we're always looking at things. And I think, you know, this is really a transition period. And we find if, we find it's more difficult, you know, to be only open one hour if we find, you know, we talked about a lot of possibilities, you know, could the program move sort of out into the main part of the library? But then, you know, that, one of the goals of the after school teen zone is it really is a zone. You know, I love the name that they, staff picked because they really need kind of like a recovery zone when they come in. You know, you're walking back from school, you're in a big group, you walk in, and it's just, the energy level is amazing. And so just having a place where they can kind of go into the room and decompress and connect and talk to staff, which we find very valuable. They can maybe play a card game, which they do. Some of them just go straight to opening their Chromebooks and they, they knock out their, their homework in that one hour. It's amazing. Because that means then they go home and they don't have it. You know, it means they can do what they want after school. Some go to sports afterwards. So we do feel the program to continue to be of value. We just, we're trying to assess, can we do one hour? Because it does make it a lot easier for coverage as well. And it kind of, it's supportive by the stats that we saw last year of how long folks stay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing this. And also, I want to acknowledge, I'm impressed that there's still so much that can happen despite, like, the deficit that you guys are operating with. And you wouldn't know that. You, the librarians are the most pleasant people in the world. And I-
I agree.
I do have two questions. And one of them is related to the teen special programs. So there are no, besides, the teen zone and the teen advocates aren't really programs in the same way, right? That, that kind of the cultural events are, or the pause to read. But the teen special programs, those were like, I imagine that, that drawing class I went to was one of those, which was incredible.
Yes.
And so there are, there will be none of those offered specifically for teens this year?
We may off the, so this summer, I don't know that we anticipated offering a teen summer program, but we did end up adding one, just to really offer a more well-rounded, you know, we didn't have as many programs this summer as we did last summer. I think, you know, once we looked at, we thought we need a teen program. We actually had, did have one this summer before. I think we had the sustainable clothing swap. So I think we do try and have one over the summer, which we would anticipate. This is also in reference to, we did have sort of an author talk one year. And I think it was in the last year, it was around, you know, teen finances and budgeting. We also had the stock market game. So sort of the adulting type classes. Some of them are well attended and some are not as much. You know, we've also done the Pen Pals program. I think that may have been a little bit more elementary age. So I think we do try different things. And that's what those one-off special programs were designed to do, were to try different formats and for teens. So I think our hope is, you know, at some point eventually, you know, we would be able to bring back some of these. But I think the amount of planning involved, we just didn't see the return on our investment for, where something like story time, it's a very, it's much more dialed in. You have, you know, sort of a template for it. You're able to, you know, it just involves a little bit less planning. There's no registration, with exception of baby story time, because that one is over 90 people, and would be higher if we didn't take registration. So I think, you know, although it's not a simple solution, I think it's iterative. We do want to keep looking at programs. This is for one fiscal year, and we'll look again, you know, for the next.
And you were saying that the Native Ameri, the Native American Heritage event is happening or is not?
It is. I think we haven't fully determined the location. I think we're looking at the Alviso Adobe. So, and that is one where we do have library staff participation in those events. We do outreach. We do, you know, we provide materials for the events. We do have a small lending collection at Alviso Adobe that we work with, of books that are used sometimes for field trips there, other times for story times. So I think we're, we're looking at that location. I just, it isn't published yet. So I don't want to say for certain, because we have to sort of schedule against other programs and events. And that one would be, as well, you know, the Friends have generously offered to sponsor for this year. So thank you again to the Friends.
And then I do think it is unfortunate about the Juneteenth. Yeah, that was one I couldn't attend this year, but I really wanted to. I just, I know that library is pushing for inclusion and community, and it's unfortunate that all the pay cuts, or the cuts, the budget cuts have resulted in that. And so I'm, I'm sorry that that had happened.
Thank you. I think, you know, it was also too about, you know, picking the right timing for the events. And I, you know, we don't have any summer cultural celebrations right now. So I think that one is a little tougher to pull off, just seasonally as well. And we just didn't get as much engagement. One thing we're doing with cultural celebrations is we are trying to engage our cultural communities more. So that's one way, you know, if we do reach out, I'd love to share that with commissioners, if you wouldn't mind pushing that out in the community, if you have contacts or, you know, organizations that you work with. Because we'd love to get them in on the planning end and just, you know, get input. We find that makes it a much more powerful event. And we've also had requests for, you know, everyone who has been involved and would like to be involved has just provided so much, you know, of input. So, and that's, you know, I think that's what we're looking at too. So we'll look at cultural celebrations each year as well. We may get feedback that some of these are not at the right month or right time as well. Yeah.
Okay. I want to second Commissioner Stroud's comment that the librarians are really great.
Thank you so much. I hope they're listening, but if they're not, I will share.
And I will also say that the push to get more volunteers to help shelve the books really seems to be making a difference. I mean, I know this, that the books are, they're more orderly, and they're also quicker to get back on the shelves. So that, that part of it's working really well. I had a couple of questions on the attendance, which I looked at. I was kind of curious, the numbers are dramatically increased. And I'm just wondering, was it a different methodology used? Or, because there wasn't any like footnote.
And you were referring to table one?
Yes.
Yes. So in this, so one of the things, I attached the state report as well, which I know was probably a little confusing. I know their headings and their, you know, verbiage or categories is different than what we use. It's a preset software that we, you know, are provided. So if you're wondering, I think most people guess that CY is current year and PY is, you know, previous or prior year. We, you know, we've had some differences in how we measure things. So I won't say that it's entirely because, I mean, I'd love to say that it's entirely because there's just been such a dramatic increase. You know, just looking, you know, anecdotally, I think the programs and attendance changed the jump. I can speak specifically to children's programs. We did start to include book legger statistics as of fiscal year 2425. So while we do gather information from book legger, anyone who's been a book legger or is one knows that there- knows that, um, there are surveys that go out to the teachers where they provide just wonderful accolades and, you know, just a, a lot of great feedback, um, for their program. That is wonderful. Um, staff says it's gold because, you know, it really gives you insight into what, you know, the classroom and just, you know, it's inspiring. But we realized that we needed stats on like the number of students that are being served. And, you know, we had the stats on how many classroom visits. And we realized we're probably going to still have to do some estimation. So if you look at table three, you'll see like Book Leggers has like, it does say 5,000, but estimated, um, because that's based on um, 200 visits times. And this is where we have to sort of extrapolate. It's approximately 25 to 30 students per class, but it depends on the grade level. It depends on who was there that day. Um, it is a lot to ask our volunteers to remember to count students each time. They're really jostling a lot when they're in there. Um, we could ask the teachers, but we've already kind of created the form for the year. So, uh, but now we know what to look for. And that's why it's so nice to present to commission and get that input because we're getting the questions and often it does help prompt, you know, a practice for us that where we start collecting other data because data is really important. It's part of our story. Um, so that one, I can speak specifically in those age groups. There was some, a jump with Book Legger numbers. Um, for elementary, I believe that is the jump for elementary, but it could be, yeah, I think that, I don't know, it doesn't quite add up to plus 5,000 though. So, um, it could be that we had, it may be there were, maybe there was a decline in one area plus the 5,000. You know, I'd have to go through and look and see because I didn't tabulate for fiscal year 24 individual programs. I just took the whole, you know, number that we had on file. Um, for teen programs, um, so fiscal year 25 was the first year we actually started also counting things like summer reading, teen programs, signups separately. So, and a lot of this is in tandem with what the state is asking. So every few years, the state does change how they ask us to measure things and count. So it does shift a little bit. And we really try and line up all our stats with what the state is asking for. Otherwise it's sort of untenable. And it's good data. You know, they ask us by age category. They have shifted age categories over time. Uh, so we, you know, we do try and line that up. Um, adult programming, I believe we did increase that in 24, 25. I think we added some more workshops. We did uh, trivia night. So I think, you know, if you kind of add all those programs up together, um, you're going to see higher participation. I don't also know for certain that we included literacy programs in fiscal year 23, 24. I think we did not. So that could also be a difference. And then all age programs, those are tight enough, you know, that they're probably, maybe there was an extra, maybe there were more people at a summer reading program event or at a cultural celebration.
Yeah, I figured that there were probably different ways of counting it, but I would assume at this point, now that you've established those, that then next year it will be more.
It will. We'd love to say it will always be consistent, but-
Maybe not.
Yes. If, is the state reporting changes. Um, I did want to point out, um, a typo on my part on the fiscal year 24, 25. If you were to sit there and add everything up, you would find that the total participants was 26,413, not 24. So did one, I don't know if anyone's at home doing that, but I wanted to just mention that.
Okay. And then I had one other comment on the, the, on Zippy and marketing because I had noted that, that someone had said that we needed a calendar out there. We had talked about that last time.
Yes.
I'm, I'm also wondering, I, I know from a staffing standpoint, that's really tough and that we don't have a lot of staff right now to send out with Zippy to a lot of places. Is it possible though to maybe, um, you know, once the schedule is established, to park Zippy someplace? Just because it's such a-
Oh, is it just a visual marketing piece?
Yeah, because it's so visually attractive. People are curious about it. Um, and as a, as a marketing piece, even that, just being able to see that it exists-
Yeah, I can definitely look and see if other agencies do that, you know.
There might be security issues-
Yeah, I think that's probably the-
But there may be safe places to put it too. I don't know. So I mean, it might be worth thinking about that. Like, for example, it could park in a, a school. That would be a relatively safe place in terms of vandalism and so on, you know? I mean-
Maybe, yeah.
At the lower, at the lower grades. Um, I, I'm just thinking that it's because it's so visual. It serves as its own advertisement almost in its-
Yeah, I almost feel like if we did that, we would take it to that event though, right? That we would want to, because I think part of the appeal is seeing inside from just the feedback from children is like, can I look in there? Can I, we closed it up at the end of the concert in the park and we had, that was probably one of our best attended events. We had, I would say over 300 people, you know, at that event and still wanting more. So we were, we were trying to wait for the moment when people would get off and we didn't have to say no to anyone getting on, but the flow of traffic was just constant. And so when we did finally close it back up, it's like, can I just take a peek? I think the curiosity is just part of the appeal, is knowing that it's just the visual, you know, appeal, but also seeing that there was books and materials inside, which then is like the marketing for library services when we bring it out for recreation events, that there's activities and programs. So I think, you know, if we brought it out, we would probably do it in tandem with an outreach.
Well, ideally you, you could, but then staffing is a problem. So I'm just thinking that, you know, if it's there and people see it, like the parents picking up the kids.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't leave it unintended though. So I'm just trying to think of how we would manage that just for security and insurance purposes.
Just a thought. It's just, in, in some ways it's, it's like a teaser.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's all I had. Thanks. Okay, no questions for me. Thank you for a really detailed presentation.
Yes.
It, it was really good to, I felt like, oh, we've cut, you know, the, the money's not there. We're going to cut everything. And so it was kind of nice to see how much we're not cutting. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I agree. It was really good to see like all that's still going on. And it's, it's really cool to see that, um, word is not getting out about, not just within Pleasanton, but within the other counties of how cool this library is.
Yes.
Just very quickly, and I think that I echo, uh, some of the comments that were made specifically around marketing and, um, the unfortunate, um, budget that, I mean, you don't make the budget, you have to live by a budget that's given to you in many, in many respects. The concern I have is that when, um, programs are cut, uh, just like in the commercial world, when people, when a company stops marketing a product, people forget about that product. Very risky to do that. And I think about how that would, that concept would apply to the library, but there's many programs that people in our community aren't aware of. And I think the library does a great job of marketing what those are.
Oh, thank you.
When those stop, it presents a risk, right? To people engaging. Well, I mean, we, we know engagement drops. And so we're not, I'm not looking for a solution from you, but I, I'm grateful that we have things like Zippy that still act as a marketing, um, tool in many respects because it's, it can be out in the public, uh, and where people see it and say, eh, maybe we should take the family to the library.
It's not forgotten. Yeah.
Right. Uh, because th- those are concerns that people will forget and people will just stop or get out of the habit of doing something. And we see that. We saw that rather through COVID where a lot of families stopped doing certain things they used to do. And I would hate that as a result of this budget challenge, that people stop engaging at the library.
That's a really good point.
Thank you. Okay, great.
Yep.
Moving on, is there an update from the Friends of the Library?
The only update I bring is that, um, the library book sale is going to be the 11th through the 14th, um, here at the library. And, um, we hope that those of you who signed up, um, look forward to seeing you and having a successful sale.
All right. Any other reports on meetings, conferences or seminars attended? Okay. So tonight, we talked about, um, future agenda items. I see that library policies review is there, but maybe we could add something about the collection development?
Sure. Just need a motion and second and a vote.
Okay. Um, I make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to put on for future agenda items, a review of the collection policy, including related procedures, um, to decide and determine whether and discuss whether we need to revise the policy further.
I'll second.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Emerson?
Aye.
Joshie?
Aye.
Stroud?
Aye.
Woodwell?
Aye.
And Chair Sabatini?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Are there any other, um, proposed agenda items?
Can I make a comment on one of the agenda items? Okay. I was wrong last time. Apparently lots of libraries offer free pages and I did not realize it. So I did my research and it's not that crazy. So I take back everything I said last time.
That's okay. It's still coming back. Um, I, if this is not agendas, but I would like to just say I am appreciative that it's coming back. I think the more, it really did prompt more questions and to the vendor. So I think it's going to give staff an opportunity to come back with something more full, you know, fully, you know, fleshed out. Yeah. So thank you.
Any others? So I also just wanted to clarify, this meeting today in September is, would generally have occurred in October, which means we will now not have an October or November meeting. Our next meeting is going to be in December.
Does anyone have a date handy? We can get that in the minutes. Thank you.
December 4th.
Okay, with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I can't believe we're going to go that long.
I know. It does seem like a long time.
I mean, it is actually.